My name is Lorenda Hooks, Assembly Member for the 35th District, and I serve as the Chair of this Committee. By law, the Committee consists of members appointed by specific elected officials who represent the proposed project site. Other Committee members joining me today include Lin Zing, appointed by Mayor Eric Adams; Gregory Anderson, appointed by Governor Kathy Hochul; George Dixon, appointed by Senator Jessica Ramos; Queensborough President Donovan Richards, he's self-appointed, but he... Mr. Allen Swisher, General Counsel, will be here instead; and Councilmember Francisco Moya, self-appointed. This Committee is statutorily charged with reviewing the Metropolitan Park application. To achieve this, each member of the Committee has been reviewing the application, and today we are receiving public comments regarding the Metropolitan Park project. The Gaming Facility Location Board established September 30th, 2025, as the date by which a vote must be conducted as to whether the project should be advanced to the Gaming Facility Location Board. These are the hearing rules. Before we begin, there are some ground rules. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the community to offer comments on the Metropolitan Park project and not a venue for public to ask questions of either the Committee, from either of the community members or the applicant. Individuals wishing to speak must sign up at the registration table. We will be taking speakers on a first-come, first-served basis. Speakers will be allowed two minutes to present their statement. A countdown timer is visible, so each speaker is aware how much time they have remaining. In-person attendance will be capped when at capacity. Today's hearing is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be posted online soon after the event concludes. The recording will be closed, captioned, for the hearing impaired. In addition to presenting comment today, there are additional ways to provide comment. You can email to metropolitanparkpubliccomments@nystec.com, or you can mail in your public comment to Metropolitan Park Community Advisory Committee, care of New York, STEC 540 Broadway, 3rd Floor, Albany, New York, 12207. All comments, spoken, emailed, and written will be documented and given equal review and wait by Committee members. While there is no deadline for submitting comments, please note that the Committee must complete its work by September 30th, 2025. Those wishing to submit comments are advised to do so as quickly as possible. If you have already submitted a comment in writing via email or mail, please do not sign up to speak if you simply plan to read your comment verbatim. Finally, attendees must remain respectful and courteous. Disruptions will not be tolerated. Anyone using offensive, threatening, or obscene language or behavior may be asked to leave at the discretion of any Committee member. Public comments... I don't need to do that, right? I just want to add, I just want to add to that about being respectful. Please be respectful of everyone who was standing up to speak. Please be respectful of the Committee up here, as we're taking our time to respectfully listen to all of you. If you cannot stay in a respectful manner, you will be asked to leave during this hearing. So, if, and the two hours will still keep going. So, please, we're not adding on time to remove anyone from here. Remain respectful, and that's a hard yes for me. So, now I'm gonna turn the mic over, so we can start the public hearing comments today.
Thank you very much. Whoever has signed up and spoken in the previous hearings, please give other people a chance to speak, so we'd like to, you know, hear as many diverse views as possible. I would like first to call the public officials to the, to the mic, please. Controller Thompson?
Chairperson, distinguished members of the panel, good morning. My name is Bill Thompson, and I'm here today not only as the former Controller of the City of New York, but also I'm proud to stand here because my firm, Seibert Williams Shank &amp; Company, is an equity partner in Metropolitan Park. And Seibert Williams Shank is one of the nation's leading MWBE investment banking firms. You've heard from others about the economic impact that this $8 billion project will have on the Queens neighborhood, but I want to focus on the benefits for MWBE firms. A commitment at 30% with a target of 35% to MWBE firms during construction and ongoing operation; a project team that will work with MWBE firms to access capital, scale operations, and compete for contracts; a unique, and it is the first time I've heard of this, $25 million lending program for MWBE firms that will create real pathways for local businesses to grow; and the $100 to $150 million in annual spending with local vendors, contractors, restaurants, and service providers that has a ripple effect on the Queens businesses of every size. This isn't about a new sports and entertainment district. It's about building wealth in communities that too often have been left out. It's about giving local businesses the capital and contracts they need to succeed and ensuring that equity is more than a slogan, it's part of the foundation of this project. And again, I stand here as an equity partner in this project, and I'm proud to be here today to support it. Thank you so much.
Are there any other public officials? Would like to call numbers 1 to 5 at the mic, please. 1 to 5.
My apologies. Good morning, everyone, and especially to the Committee. And I'm surprised that the Committee wasn't made a board member, and I'm kind of disappointed in that, so it should have been a cab with a B, not a C. But that's my opinion. I'm here today to represent Flushing Meadow Corona Park Conservancy. My name is Jeanne Silver, and I am proud to say I'm the President of the Conservancy for the past 20 years, well, 15 years. We're here to say, very simple, we're tired of parkland trying to be giveaway for some sort of price tag. That's number one. Number two, how many times do we have to go through this? Just too many times. Right now, my one concern is with Flushing Meadow Corona Park, and the... I'm a Met fan, let me throw that out there quick. And the boardwalk, and everybody's familiar with the boardwalk from the train over to the stadium. It really needs a lot of help, and it's really a dangerous place to try to use a mobile vehicle in. So, let's get back to Flushing Meadow Corona Park. It's really the world's park. The history, everybody knows, I don't have to go over it. But I want you to make sure that all our parks are being taken care of because the budget cuts keep coming back more and more. We also need, we have an election coming up real soon, guys, and we got a lot of union people here, and I think that's great. I hope you are evaluating who your candidates will be for this upcoming event. And if you have some time, come on over to Flushing Meadow Corona Park. It has saved a lot of lives during the pandemic, and it's gonna save a lot of lives in the future, because it is the world's park.
Thank you so much, appreciate you.
Give back.
Go for it. Come on, you said you were giving more time. Have a great day, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dr. Helen Artiaga. I'm a longtime resident of Corona. I'm a healthcare leader, I'm a healthcare advocate, but more importantly, I'm here to support the project because it has a health benefit. Currently, right now, 72% of the nation get healthcare via their employers. This project is gonna give 23,000 individuals healthcare, good healthcare, to them and their families. Can you imagine 23,000 families getting access to their annual physicals, vaccines, mammograms, and pap smears? Not only that, can you imagine them getting life-saving surgeries like heart disease? Which one out of every five individuals in this borough has and is needed. Colonoscopies, which is the biggest issue we have for cancer prevention in communities of color. And then let's not forget prenatal care. We want healthy babies in our communities. In these communities, prenatal access is an issue. Healthcare right now is being attacked in so many different ways, and this project is standing strong and saying, no, healthcare matters to everybody. When, right now, as a healthcare and a CEO of a hospital, I am tired of seeing my emergency room full and seeing so many individuals not having access to good insurance. Because with good insurance, you have peace of mind that if anything happens, you and your family have access to good healthcare, to good medication, good health being, and I want a healthy community. I lived in Corona my whole life, and I want to see my kids growing up healthy, my neighbors growing up healthy, and this project will do that. 23,000 union jobs with healthcare. So, please support this project, thank you.
Good morning, members of the Committee, and in particular, my Assemblywoman Chair Hooks and my City Councilman Moya. So nice to see the both of you. My name is Isaac Carmignani. I'm a member of Community Board 4 and a Corona resident. I am in support of Metro Park. I believe it is good for Queens, and there's so many reasons. So, we have a much-needed transportation upgrade. We are doing this without spending public dollars. There are jobs, music, the food hall, the Taste of Queens program, real thought around addiction for those that need those services, and we hear, often hear opposition based on that. Tax revenue to MTA, to schools, local hiring centers, it's helpful environmentally. So, I believe, we see a lot of division today. We see people taking entrenched positions in the belief that what they're saying, that their hopes are radically different and better than the other side, when in fact, we're all very similar, and we want the same basic things. I believe that this project brings us together in many ways, and will do wonderful things for Queens. So, let entertainment be the economic engine that makes Corona and Flushing a destination for years to come. Thank you.
Should I wait for the clock? Grand Rising, Madam Chair, Board. My name is Reggie Piggies, CEO and owner of Piggies Group Solutions, where we're empowering communities and building futures through real estate. I am a resident shareholder of Dory Miller. We are the largest residential community in closest proximity to this proposed project. And I want to let you know that me, as an individual, I support this project, and the reason being is, if you're not unaware, you heard me say this before, we live in what's called a urban oven. Because of the parking lot and all the asphalt and the runways from LaGuardia Airport, the ambient temperature is significantly higher than it is in outlined areas in and around the Corona Jackson Heights area. By transforming this parking lot into a real park, giving green space, it's gonna help to rectify that particular situation, lower the temperature, and also will help with those who are in the immediate area that suffer from respiratory issues. So, by putting in the green space, helping to build catch basins because there's an issue with overflowing, flooding going into the water basins in and around the area, this project will help to rectify that. So, we're asking that you will go forward and approve this project because the benefit, not only with the jobs and everything else, but the air quality, quality of life issues, the things that it will help to improve in and around the Corona area, particularly for those of us who are immediately impacted, are tremendous. So, I want to thank you, thank you in advance for approving this project, and let's just keep moving this forward. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and we don't want to miss it. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Olga. Thank you for having us and allowing us to speak. I just want to start off by saying that I grew up in Jackson Heights, Corona, and I have walked those city po parking lots my whole life. As a mom, now I ask myself, do I want my child to grow up in a surrounded and empty asphalt? Or do I want to have 20 acres of green space for the kids actually can play? Metropolitan Park isn't just about casino. It's about transforming away space into something that finally gives back to Queens. It's an $8 billion investment, 23,000 good paying jobs, union paying jobs, childcare for working family, parents like me, safer, more accessible transit, and parks that family can actually enjoy for generations to come. Some people may say that this project helps billionaires, but God, billionaires don't need more money. Billionaires don't need childcare. Billionaires don't need a union job. Our families do. Our neighborhood, our community, needs that. Our family needs childcare. Please tell me how many jobs offer indoor childcare? When families can actually feel safe and be able to drop the child wherever they work and be known that the child is well taken care of? I don't think I know many. We're asking for this opportunity in Queens for decades. Now, we finally have a project that brings jobs, a park, because even though it's parkland, it's just asphalt, right? And childcare. There's many families here. I'm gonna continue bringing childcare because it's very important. We don't have childcare in jobs. We can either keep the parking lot, or we can build future for our kids that they well deserve.
Thank you, you're at time, thank you. We're calling numbers 6 to 10 at the mic, 6 to 10. 6 to 10 at the mic, please.
Good morning to the Board, members of the Board, and to everyone. My name is Shirley Gilbert, and I'm a community leader.
Excuse me, just get closer to the mic, miss, we can't hear.
Okay. I've been living in the neighborhood of Flushing for over 60 years, long enough to know a bad deal from a good deal, and this Metropolitan Park is a good deal. For years, all we ever heard was talk, talk, talk. One day, we'll do something about this space, and that day is now. We need to grab it. I've seen the paperwork, I've been to the meetings. I didn't come here to talk about hopes and dreams. I came here to talk about the facts. Over 23,000 good jobs, that's a fact. A brand-new wheelchair accessory, seven line, that's a fact. You know what it means for seniors, it means independence. For too long, the area around the ballpark has been nothing but a concrete jungle, a big, empty space that offered nothing but community parking. We talked about this neighborhood needs for years, and now we have a real opportunity to do something about it. We helped shape this proposal, and this Committee listened when we spoke. Metropolitan Park isn't built for us, it's being built with us. When I think about the folks, I know the biggest challenges I hear are not enough places for our young people to go and high costs of healthcare. And this project directly addresses both the issues. New 25 acres of park space will give our children and grandchildren safe, beautiful places to run and play, and the guaranteed funding for seniors and youth needs is a commitment to our health and well-being. This project isn't a gamble, it's a sure bet on our community's future. It's a time, it's about time we turn, turning a desolate area and a parking lot into a gathering place for creating opportunities for the next generation. So, let's do what we've always done, invest in our people.
Thank you, you're at time.
Good morning. My name is Michael Di Valera. I'm a proud resident of Corona, Queens, Chair of Neighborhood Advisory Board 3, former Community Board 3 member, and Treasurer of my co-op. I stand here today to bear witness to an injustice that has lasted for decades, the neglect of our community. For too long, Corona and surrounding neighborhoods have been denied the kind of investment that brings safety, opportunity, and most importantly, prosperity. Now, we have a chance with that. It's Metropolitan Park. It's about revitalizing, it's about creating thousands of jobs, empowering small neighborhood businesses, and giving families a place to gather with pride. A plan that builds not just for today, but for tomorrow. This is about us, for us. Our opponents repeat the same three claims. Steve Cohen is a billionaire, we can't have Metropolitan Park, they have a viable alternative. Let's be clear about these statements. One is true, one is false, and one is nothing more than an outdated minority opinion. I'll give you a clue, yes, Steve Cohen is a billionaire. But that is not about his wealth, that's not what this is about. This is about our future. And yet, here we go again, others trying to tell us how to live, telling us what we should do, what we should want, how we should be allowed to dream. More than 50 years ago, the incomparable Stevie Wonder sang words that could have been written for this very moment. He said, "'Cause we're sick and tired of hearing your song, telling us how you are going to change right from wrong. Because if you really want to hear our views, you have done nothing." Today, we finally have a chance to do something. Let's choose opportunity. Let's choose the dignity of being seen and being heard. Let's choose hope. Let's choose Metropolitan Park. Thank you very much.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ted Tang, and I'm a resident for 25 years of Flushing now. Just wanted to talk about carrying on what Michael was just saying about listening. So, I went through my schedule, and I want to talk about how Metropolitan Park has listened and how they've engaged our community. So, just a few of the ones I've attended. Okay, so, State Senator had a PS143 Corona meeting in May 19th of '23, then another meeting at Elm Court, just November of '23, Environmental Review Meeting, December of 2023, another town hall at the Hall of another town hall at the Hall of Science, February 7th, 2024. And now we go into the several Community Board meetings that I've actually attended in support. October 23rd, CB7. October 24th, CB9 Land Use. October 28th, CB8. October 29th, CB6. October 30th, CB7. I'm going to speed this up. October, November 4th, CB3. November 12th, CB9. This is the ones I've attended. I can't imagine how many they've attended. CB9, we got CB8 on the 14th, CB4 Land Use on the 14th of November. CB7, General, November 18th. CB3, General, November 21st. Oh, Borough President's Hearing, November, December 5th. CB4, General, December 10th. City Planning Commission, now we're in 2025, finally. January 8th, March 6th, we had Zoning Commission. 12th, Land Use. 28th of April is Public Design, 23rd of Public Design, and of course, the two CAC meetings we've had. What I'm trying to say is really simple. If this is about showing up, they've shown up. Why have I shown up to these? Because they listen to the community. When I had a concern, Sully listened. When I had a question, Sean answered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Community Advisor Committee for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Mitchell Wu, and I am the Director of Queens Community Services of the Chinese American Planning Council, also known as CPC. We are a 60-year-old social service organization with over 35 program sites throughout New York City, including our Queens Community Center in Flushing that serves over 1,000 Queens-based community members daily throughout the entire borough. As a valued community partner, Metropolitan Park continues to support our efforts to advance the socioeconomic mobility of Queens residents and families, from early childcare and literacy classes to services for families with special needs and older adult programming. Their belief in our mission ensures our community members are able to transform from survival into success. CPC is supportive of the inclusive, forward-thinking, and community-integrated workforce and economic development potential of the proposed Metropolitan Park project. The group's commitment to creating thousands of good-paying permanent union jobs, building career advancement pipelines, and facilitating access to critical wraparound supports aligns with the employment needs of our diverse community members. Furthermore, Metropolitan Park's strategic approach of hiring local talent and prioritizing minority women own businesses that will open pathways of opportunity for the multi-generational community of immigrants, individuals with disabilities, and low-income residents of Queens supported by organizations like CPC. Thank you again for this time.
Good morning, everyone.
Hold on a minute.
Sorry.
Another outburst, you'll be asked to leave.
Fuck, fuck, one.
Period.
Can you even shut that?
We're not doing that today. I am not playing. You will be removed. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I am Phil Fiorentino, a trustee to the New York City District Council of Carpenters. I'm also the president of the Queens Board of Business Agent and a proud member of Local 45, which is all of Queens. I'm here today to speak for something that's going to make a real difference for working people, the Metropolitan Park Project. Let me be straight with you. The project needs jobs, real jobs, union jobs. We're talking over 23,000 positions with 17,000 construction jobs and 6,000 permanent careers. Once it's built, that paycheck benefits the stability for thousands of families. This isn't just another flashy development. It's a serious investment for working-class people, and it's backed by labor. The trades are ready, the hotel workers are ready, and we're ready to build it. It's not just about work. It's about what this project give back to the community. 25 acres of new park space, green space for families, not just more concrete, a food hall that showcases Queens, giving local vendors a real shot, a ramped seven-train station, safer, accessible, and built for the future, the community, the Impact Trust that puts money into the youth programs, senior services, and addiction recovery. This is the kind of project that lifts everybody up, not just developers, but for workers, the neighbors, and small businesses. It's built union, community-focused, and it's got Queens written all over it. So I'm asking this committee, let's do the right thing, support the Metropolitan Project. Let's bring good jobs, real opportunity, and a better future for the people who makes the city run. Let's build it union, let's build it strong, and let's build it now. Union jobs, union wages, and union benefits. I'll say it again. Union jobs, union wages, and union benefits. Thank you.
Calling numbers 11, 11 to 15 at the mic, please. 11 to 15.
11. Thank you. Right up to the mic.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dennis Ibrich. I'm a council representative with the New York City District Council of Carpenters. I'm also a proud born and raised resident of Queens. Once more, I'm here to present my strong support for this Metropolitan Park proposal. This isn't just a casino. It's a once-in-a-generation investment in Queens. It will create thousands of good-paying, family-sustaining union jobs during construction and thousands more permanent careers once the doors open, real careers that our members live and thrive in the communities they're building. Metropolitan Park will also turn an underused area into a vibrant hub, bringing new businesses, public spaces, and real revenue for our schools, transit, and services. It will be built by the highest standards by skilled union workers. And the people leading this effort have done everything they could to get this right. They put the working class first. They've committed to area standard wages, union jobs, MWBE participation, local hiring, and real community benefits. Unlike some developers in New York City who cut corners and ignore what working-class people need, this team has listened, adapted, and made sure our voices matter. This plan has been through it all. This is our chance to deliver lasting prosperity for working families. Let's stand together and make Metropolitan Park a reality. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Craig Laster, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Common Point and also a lifelong resident of Queens. Interesting stat. The Robinhood Foundation said 1 in 4 people in New York City access the food pantry this year. If you think about that number, 35,000 people in Queens came to our organization this year to access a food pantry. If we are able to take this project, which we fully support, and give those people not only union jobs, working jobs, but jobs that pay a livable wage, we will change the dynamic in Queens. This is so, so important. One of the other things our community organization does is we support neurodiverse children. And this is one place that no one's really talking about, but there's a full playground in this park for children that are neurodiverse. How many places do you see that in New York City? I think this project will change the landscape of Queens, will change the landscape of New York City, and not only myself as a person, but our organization fully supports it. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Joe Kessler.
Wait, wait, wait. So are you going to be my first example? Okay.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Joe Kessler. I am a lifelong Bayside resident. I want to thank the CAC for running these meetings. I've seen, I've been to many of them. The civics, the community boards, all are in support of Metropolitan Park, and so am I. I'm a lifelong UFT member, over 40 years. Proud union. This is a union city. And I've been going to Shea Stadium since 1967. And 1964 was a big time. Baseball came back to New York. The Pace and Family brought it back. It was the World's Fair. Shea Stadium was the Mecca. It was the stadium, and every other city followed. And at least we had grass. They had astroturf. But what I'm getting at is, we've fallen behind. And thankfully, to Steve Cohen and his team and Mike Sullivan, right now, there hasn't been any updates in 60 years in that area. There's been nothing. I've gone to all sorts of stadiums, arenas, and there's things for children, adults. We need to do that here. We need an upgrade. I still drive my car. You know why? Because I can't walk up those steps at the Seven Line or the Long Island Railroad or walk the plank where they're broken half the time. These meetings, and Steve and company, said that we're going to do it, and they do the best. And when they teamed with Hard Rock, it's become a juggernaut. When I went to see Craig down and saw that 3D, it was magnificent. And they will do top-of-the-line stuff for the community. We need this. And again, it's union jobs. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nicole Abbottis-Gordon, and I support the project. I'm a lifelong resident of Flushing. I also went to school in Corona. I am a program director of a community center in Flushing. My children have no safe place to play. My seniors have no place to go. As we know, all the funding is getting cut rapidly. So for us to even go to the park, we had to pay a fee to go to a safe park this summer, to take my camp. For the people that oppose it, and that's your right, because everybody has an opinion, but understand this. What else do you have to offer? This is not just a project that is about a casino or a stadium. This is a lifelong project that is about investing in the community, investing in us, investing in our children, investing in the seniors. This is a project that is going to surpass us. It is time. It is not safe there. No one has spoken about the safety. Everybody wants to cry about the park. But guess what? It's not a park. It's a parking lot. And you can't even go there because it's not safe. So you have your opinion, just as we have ours. But you have to look inside yourself and ask, what other better solution is there besides Metropolitan Park? Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Andy from the Queens Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today on behalf of the Queens Chamber of Commerce and to voice our strong support for Metropolitan Park. We would like to take a moment to thank Metropolitan Park for its strong support of small businesses. We wanted to highlight for the CAC members the Hard Rock Unity Program, a specific initiative that will help extend economic activity beyond Metropolitan Park to our small businesses in the area. The Hard Rock Unity Program allows Hard Rock points that are earned from spending activity at any Hard Rock property to be used for local spending, including at Queens Unity Partners such as local bars, restaurants, and entertainment facilities. Hard Rock Unity members will also be included in promotional referrals at Metropolitan Park to help encourage patrons to spend their Unity Points at local businesses. We are pleased to recognize and read the names of some of the small businesses that stand with us in supporting this project and signed up for the Hard Rock Unity Program. Mexi Colombia, Mia Meow, Yahana Noodle, Mojito, Mojitos, Moon Cheese, Mr. Seba, Nagi Ramen Sushi, Napoli's Gastro Bar, Napoli Ban Chagar, Napoli Momo Cafe, Nuevo's Tacos Al Sorato, Akawa Asian Cuisine, Old Captain's Dumpling Incorporated, Over the Moon, Panorama, Pecositas, Pew Pew, Pizzeria Primera, Polio's Marios, Queens Beer Factory, Roni Lita Brothers Pizza, Royal Bianin Palace and Bar, Royal Social Club LLC, Sabo Latino, Sabo Pueno 2, Samudra Indian Vegetarian and Vegan Restaurant, San Gritas, Savanna Restaurant, Shanghai's, Spicy Tibet, and Table 21.
Calling numbers 16 to 24 at the mic. 16 to 24.
Morning, everyone. My name is Daniel. I'm also from the Queens Chamber of Commerce. I myself was born and raised in Queens. So again, I just want to reiterate, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to speak here and show our support for the Metropolitan Park Project. I would just be continuing the list that my colleague Andy has started, because it's so many businesses that are taking part in this Hard Rock Unity Program. De la Montaña Restaurant, Miro Rivera's Bakery, Crunch Cheese, Mimisa, Tamel NYC Bar and Restaurant, 15 Bar and Restaurant, Three Dessert, 80/90 Taiwanese Cuisine, All In, Amaru Bar, Angel Indian Restaurant, Antonio's Kitchen, Aqua Miel, Avli Greek Tavern, Majeco Secua Himalayan Grill, Buccaneer Diner, Buddha Asian, Burger Queens, Cafe Rubio, China Spicy Hot Pot, Como un Abario, Corona Eats, Cositas Ricas, Crown One, The Antigua NY Corp, Date Bar, Deli Heights, Deli Gloria's Cafe Corp, Doña Coquitas Pizzeria, Dong Yue, Dosa Delight, Dow Dow Kitchen, El Bure de Cafe, El Gachito, El Rico Tinto, Eloy Hospitality LLC, Emoji Burger, Estrella Latina Bar and Grill, Evelias Tamales, Flushing Ice Cream Factory, Gennaro's Pizza, Gilda's Restaurant, Ji Lu Antan, Gong Gan, Gorgoli Authentic Nepali Cuisine, Grace Thai, Guri's Market, Hot Bazaar, Hamid Sweets Inc., Happy Garden Bayside Inc., Hay Kitchen, Himalayan Yak Restaurant, Hot Peppers, Jackson Diner, Jojo, Juju Momo Restaurant, Just Made For You, Kebab King, Kaizen Restaurant, Kathmandu Fusion Kitchen, Labundancia, La Cuchara, La Pequeña Colombia, and much more. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Madam Chairperson and Representatives, Council. That list was awesome. I'm hungry. I don't know about the rest of you guys. But I'm here to talk about the jobs. 23,000 jobs. Oh my goodness. If this was an, I'm retired. So if I was young, I would be looking towards these jobs, starting from the ground up, from years to come. If that doesn't push this over, nothing else should. A job gives you everything, healthcare, family life, anything and everything. You have a job, you can do whatever you need, whatever you want. And that is all I have to say. Have a great day, everyone.
Hello. Can you hear me? My name is Adam Ganzer. I'm the Executive Director of New Yorkers for Parks. We are a fully independent, not-for-profit, that focuses our advocacy solely on research and programming in New York City's park system. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. New Yorkers for Parks did not oppose the alienation required to make this project possible, and we did not make that decision lightly. It was guided by local leaders, community boards, and an understanding of the long history of this site languishing as parking lots and the potential future to remain as such. Our decision was also inspired by the proposed unparalleled investment in infrastructure, transportation, and of course, Metropolitan Park. At roughly half the entire site, the new 25-acre park, designed by very renowned architects, shop architects, and field operations firms I've worked with in the past, is to be funded and built by Queens Future. It will also be maintained long-term by them. At the same time, some additional context is important. The development site sits within the larger precinct of Flushing Meadows Corona Park, the marquee park of Queens. Flushing Meadows is a poster child for poor city management and inequitable investment. Dilapidated conditions, constant flooding, and a backlog of capital repairs must be addressed. What's more, the park squeaks by with barely 18 full-time parks workers and is wholly dependent on public money. With this in mind, we would very much encourage both the city and the commission to encourage this team to invest in Flushing Meadows Park. And we also look to any payments that are made associated with the alienation to go directly to the park. directly to the park. This plan transforms 50 acres of asphalt, of parking lots, into a robust, well-programmed open space.
Thank you. Your time. Thank you. Your time, sir.
Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Moshe Meesutels, and I'm here on behalf of the New York City Police Athletic League, also known as PAL. For over a century, PAL has provided safe spaces, mentorship, and opportunities for young people across the city, including right here in Queens. We strongly support Metropolitan Park because it aligns with our mission of keeping kids safe and giving them opportunities to succeed. This project will create 25 acres of new parks, athletic fields, and playgrounds where children can play and grow in a safe environment. It will also bring more than 23,000 permanent and construction jobs, real opportunities for young people and families in our community. Just as important, Metropolitan Park commits over $1 billion to community benefits, including funding for youth programs, healthcare, and senior services. These investments will directly strengthen organizations like PAL that are on the front lines with our kids every day. Our young people deserve safe spaces, access to good jobs, strong community resources. Metropolitan Park offers all of that right here in Queens. On behalf of PAL and the thousands of youth and families we serve, I urge you to support this project and help us create a brighter future for the next generation. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name is Joanna, and I'm here to express my support for the Queens Future Plan for Metropolitan Park. I have worked in Queens, specifically in Flushing, supporting small businesses for over 20 years. My work has been with the Pan-Asian entrepreneurs who continue to be left out of critical conversations by government that impact their livelihoods. They have asked for opportunities to participate in economic revitalization opportunities that can stimulate business, only to be met with silence. Many of these small business owners and associations that I have spoken with are excited by the possibility that this development can bring to the area. I'm also supportive because of the community benefits that this project will provide, everything from transportation transformation that will mean increased safety for the area to thousands of permanent good-paying jobs that would give priority to local residents in the hotel and the entertainment venue. As someone who has worked to increase workforce development programs, the biggest criticism from the program participants is that there aren't jobs at the end of the training. And with this project, I fully expect that many of the people hired for this project will look like me. As I stated in my previously submitted written testimony, I ask this community advisory to vote yes.
Good morning. My name is Anita. I'm here to represent the Hard Rock International. I lived in Queens for 16 years, and I commute into Manhattan Times Square to work. And I spend about two hours a day just to commute into Manhattan and back home. I support this project because with the community in Queens, the commute time is going to cut in half. Not only that, we're going to create jobs, and also jobs with benefits. We always live by the motto, love also, or take time to be kind, save the planet, all is one. Thank you so much.
Morning. My name is Philip. I also work at Hard Rock Hotel New York. You know, we're located in Times Square. I'm pretty much born and raised in Flushing, New York. Like my colleague said, you know, commute is a big thing into New York City, and having this project go through and having the hotel in New York, in Flushing, will be an awesome job opportunity for everybody and the community. You know, being born here and living here for such a long time, over 40 years, nothing has happened. So, you know, it's good to see some, you know, people taking initiatives and trying to bring this project alive, and, you know, I look forward to this project as well, too.
Good morning. My name is Walter. I'm also a Hard Rock employee, a proud Hard Rock employee. I'm also a member of HCC. So I understand when they say we're creating 23,000 jobs. I'm fully behind that. Because not only does HCC take care of our own, Hard Rock takes care of everybody they work with. They care about the community. They have culture club programs. They definitely want to invest into this park that has been nothing. And I'm also talking to you as a Queens boy, born and raised Jackson Heights, grew up Corona, grew up Bayside, all over Forest Hills. I have seen nothing happen in this space for over the years. I remember when City Field got renovated, and that created so many job opportunities for everybody in the neighborhood, expecting it to be more. This is what is the final step in that City Field original project. I feel like this would develop 25 acres of park that the people in Corona really need, honestly. And the jobs that the community could just take advantage of in that immediate neighborhood will be great for them as well. It would only pick up the neighborhood. And I'm all for this project. Thank you for your time.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Robert Vitelli, and I'm the CEO of the New York LGBT Network. For over 30 years, our mission has been to create safe spaces, build strong families, and support equality, LGBTQ community across Queens and beyond. We operate the only full-service LGBT community center in Queens located in Astoria, providing critical life-saving, education, health, mental health, advocacy, and leadership services to the entire Queens LGBTQ community. These services can be found in every neighborhood from Far Rockway to Flushing and beyond. And the New York LGBT Network is the producer of the annual Queens Pride Celebration, held the first Sunday every year in Jackson Heights. I want to speak today in strong support of Metropolitan Park. This project represents not just an investment in buildings, but an investment in people, in neighborhoods, and in the values of inclusivity that Queens stands for. Our organization has seen firsthand the commitment of Metropolitan Park's partners, Steve Cohen and Hard Rock Entertainment. They have been incredible supporters of the LGBT Network and of the Queens Pride Parade, helping us continue a tradition that began right here in Queens more than three decades ago. Their support for Pride and for LGBTQ youth programs shows that their commitment runs deeper than a project. It is about building a community where everyone belongs. And this partnership is not just recent. It goes back before Metropolitan Park was even a thought or a dream. 10 years ago, the New York LGBT Network founded the annual Pride Night at City Field in partnership with the New York Mets. They have not only talked the talk, they have walked the walk consistently and proudly in support of Queens' LGBTQ community. Metropolitan Park will bring 25 acres of new public parks, thousands of good-paying jobs, and vital community benefits to Queens. But for us, it also means a promise that large-scale development can go hand-in-hand with equity, representation, and support for the most vulnerable among us. On behalf of the New York LGBT Network, I urge you to see Metropolitan Park not just as a transformation of a parking lot, but as a partnership with the people of Queens...
Can we get numbers 25 to 35 to the microphone, please?
How are you? Great. How you doing so far?
I'm gonna get my auctioneer. I'm gonna get my auctioneer speaking on. Good morning. My name is Tracy Donnelly. I'm the CEO of the Child Center of New York, founded in Queens in 1953, serving over 60,000 children and families. I am also the founder of Make an Impact, supporting 700 not-for-profits nationwide, including 500 right here in New York. For over 70 years, we've watched Queens families struggle with the same challenges, and Metro Park finally addresses those. This isn't just development. It's an $8 billion investment shaped by Queens for Queens, through 16 community workshops, over 1,000 stakeholder meetings, and knocking on 450,000 doors. This project listened to the families we've served for generations. That's why all six community boards approved it. This impact will be transformative. 23,000 good-paying jobs, averaging $140,000 annually. That is triple the current median wage in Queens. But here's what matters most: New York State directs 80% of their casino tax to education. Millions are earmarked for substance abuse and mental health services. We know these funds are desperately needed. This revenue stream will strengthen the community-based prevention, treatment, and recovery services our families need. And with Queens' first hiring, parents can work close to home while their tax contributions fund the very programs their families needed. The 25 acres of park are more than Bryant Park, The High Line, and Union Square combined. This is a safe place for families to grow and gather, and a fully accessible seven-line station, 450 affordable housing units, and over $1 billion in direct community benefits. And you see the comprehensive support systems being built here. After 71 years serving Queens, we know this is our chance to create sustainable funding for education, mental health services, and community programs while keeping families together. Metropolitan Park isn't just...
Okay, I should say good morning, but it's really good afternoon, guys. Very happy to be here, very happy to see you guys. Mrs. Sullivan, Delissa, this is a wonderful opportunity. I'm trying not to be redundant. I've been listening. I'm sorry.
So, so, so he's testifying. There have been others that have been up here as well. All I'm saying is, are you gonna finish your statement?
I would like to. Can I reclaim my time?
Uh, yes. Give him back his time. Has he spoken before?
It's up to you. They did already. Okay, I can go now?
Yes. So...
If I could finish, if I could start?
Not to, right?
I've been quiet for everyone else. Okay. All right. Well, listen.
So, so, sorry, sorry. You do have to use another speaker because you did speak the last time.
Okay, even though there was others that spoke? That happened?
Yes.
Okay.
Listen, listen, again, 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 again. Have respect. We are handling it up here. Please control yourselves.
Can I just ask one question?
If you would like to yield your time to someone else, that's fine, but you can't speak again.
How you doing? I'm Erica Ford. I'm the CEO of Life Camp Incorporated.
Wait, guys, wait, guys, guys, you can't clap. Anytime y'all keep stopping, we starting back at two. So just let us speak.
Yes. I'm Erica Ford. I'm the CEO of Life Camp, Queens resident and longtime activist in New York City and around the country. We live in America. Nobody is satisfying everybody. We are here with a project that is going to happen in New York City. What we're saying is we want it to happen here at the Mets Shea Stadium. The reason why is because ain't nothing else happening there right now. And the people that got a problem with it, they should have did something before this came. They had enough years and time to go organize. Organizers organize. You compromise, you work together, and you make something happen for the majority of the people. The majority of the people in this neighborhood said they want this. They are professional activists. I've been on the front lines for 38 years. I know how this works. You come, you make a sign, next week you're making a sign for something else. But these people are indigenous to this community, and this will benefit them. So let's block the noise out, and let's focus on the wins, because the Mets is gonna win the championship and the casino.
Okay, okay. Next, next up, next up.
I don't even know if I can go after that. That was amazing. Okay, let me get my glasses on. Thank you so much. Good evening, or good morning, or whatever. My name is Mark Mauricio. I am a proud member of the Hotel Gaming Trade Council, and I am a hospitality worker in New York. Time and time again, Queens residents like me see project promises, created jobs to help communities, only to watch them fail to deliver these communities. Metropolitan Park is different. We have already seen Metropolitan Park invest in local programs to make our community safe and strong. If this project is approved, it will create thousands of permanent family-stable jobs for our New Yorkers like me, who also build new programs to help small businesses, parks, nonprofit organizations, vendors, and more. Metropolitan Park is prepared to deliver on their promises and to give long-lasting benefits for Queens. And we owe that to our community to help that happen. I urge you to support this proposal and the future of this development. I also want to thank everybody here, good and bad, doesn't matter, we're all here to make a difference. It's true, it's been sitting there since I was a kid. I'm 47. I haven't seen anything good about that. I am so happy that he came through and everybody that supports him. I can't believe I have so much time. I was nervous. I still am. But God bless everybody here. Let's just be cool and calm, and let's just make something happen.
How you guys doing? I'm Herman Tilko, 37-year resident of Corona, Queens. And I'm also a 20-year veteran of the US Navy. The Flanders Field Post 150, Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, serves and supports initiatives that positively impacts the lives of our veterans, their families, and local community. This memorandum serves as our official endorsement of the Metropolitan Park Project, current plans surrounding the vicinity of City Field. As one of the oldest chartered VFW posts throughout the nation, and one of the oldest, if not the oldest, organizations located in close proximity of City Field, we have served generations of veterans, their families, and the local communities of Corona, Jackson Heights, and beyond. We further support the mission of other individuals, organizations, and local businesses whom believe in the support of our mission. One of those individuals is New York Mets owner Steve A. Cohen, the father of a US Marine and Afghanistan War veteran. With more than 20 clinics throughout the nation and expanding even further, the Cohen's Veterans Network has provided the mental health resources for the post-9/11 generation, filling in the gaps within our community. This network of clinics has provided untold support from coast to coast. While some talk about supporting the veteran community, Mr. Cohen has put his words into action through the Cohen's Veterans Network. Supporting Metropolitan Park is a sensible decision. Corona, Jackson Heights. And I personally support this because I live in Corona and...
Hello. Good morning. My name's Jose Moncaill, and I'm here today as a proud union organizer, speaking on behalf of the working men and women who keep this city moving. When we talk about development in Queens, we don't just want big promises. We want real partnerships. And that's exactly what we've seen from the Metropolitan Park team. They've earned our respect, not just by talking about supporting labor, but by actually doing it. They've made it clear, union labor is not just welcome on this project, it's essential. That kind of commitment doesn't come around often, and it's why we're standing behind Metropolitan Park. Union jobs mean safety, quality, and fairness. They mean workers who are trained, protected, and paid what they deserve. And this project is going to create thousands of those jobs, jobs that support families, strengthen communities, and give people a shot at a better life. This is... This is a project that respects workers, respects neighborhoods, and respects Queens. Steve Cohen and the Mets have shown they're serious about doing the right thing by labor and by the community. That's why we're here today, to say loud and clear, we support Metropolitan Park. Let's build a union, let's build it with pride, and let's build it for people who've earned it. Thank you. Vote in favor of the project, and let's get to work.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Elena Plaskar, and I'm a proud member-- Okay. Good morning, my name is Elena Plaskar, and I'm a proud member of the Hotel and Gaming Trades Council, and a hospitality worker here in New York. Time and time again, Queens residents like me have seen projects promise to create jobs and help communities, only to watch them fail to deliver on these commitments. Metropolitan Park is different. We have already seen Metropolitan Park invest in local programs to make our community safer and stronger. If this project is approved, it will create thousands of permanent, family-sustaining jobs for New Yorkers like me, while also building new programs to help small businesses, parks, nonprofit organizations, vendors, and more, and more, that operate in this area. Metropolitan Park is prepared to deliver on their promise to get long-lasting benefits for Queens. And we owe it to the community to help that happen. I urge you to support this proposal and the future we Queens residents deserve. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Chris Batress. I'm a Community Board Member. Also, I grew up in Corona. I'm still in Queens, only because I'm a union member and my union wages. Also, I'm an organizer with the New York City District Council of Carpenters, and I'm here this morning to voice my strong support for the Metropolitan Park Project. This project means thousands of union jobs construction, good-paying jobs with benefits that give working families stability and dignity. It also means permanent careers in hospitality, maintenance, and operation that will stay in our community long after the construction is done. For the Latino community, people like me, this is very important. Latinos make up a large part of the union workforce here in New York City and Queens. Projects like this will give hard-working men and women, many of them immigrants and first-generation like me, a pathway to the middle class beyond construction. It also opens doors to long-term opportunities in new industries right here in Queens. Metropolitan Park is more than a development, it's an investment in people like me. I'm putting myself out there because I'm a Latino, Hispanic, from Corona, I'm still over here, right? And it's only because I'm a union member. This investment, right, is for families and the future of Queens and this border. New York City is made of unions, right? That's why I proudly support it, and I urge all my neighbors to support this and colleagues to do the same. Let's build this, and let's build this union. Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Burke. I live in Jackson Heights, and I am a big supporter of Metropolitan Park. I spent most of my free time, the last twenty, thirty years, advocating for public space, safer transportation, safer pedestrian walkways, better bike lanes. And this project delivers on every single thing that takes years and years to, to get. They're going to make this a world-class subway station. Right now, it's kind of an embarrassment, my mother cannot navigate it, except on game nights, can't even go up or down the stairs. The, the, every, every, the bus, anything in, in that area, if you want to bike, there's so many choke points that are highly dangerous. They're setting aside, on the other side of the sidewalk, on the other side of Roosevelt, without taking any, any space away from the limited Roosevelt Avenue, they're putting dedicated, safe, two-way bike lanes. They're, they're putting twenty and twenty-five, up to twenty-five acres of park. Right now, around the city, if you look at our parks, they're not maintained, wish they could, and I don't think any money's coming soon, but they're gonna actually maintain this park. So how often do you get a developer delivering on a silver platter things that take decades and money that we don't have? Never. So we're getting public space, we're getting much better pedestrian access. They're fixing the way cars go in and out of right now, if you go to the U.S. Open. Basically, cars take over the park, right? That's not gonna happen under this plan. So anything we can do to get cars out of the park, to get people to bike, to get people to walk, and people to have an accessible ADA-compliant train station, I'm a hundred percent for. So thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Margaret Flanagan, lifelong Queens resident, strongly against this proposal, and I appreciate the committee's attention to these points. Do not mistake the zoning compliance as unprecedented community support. As reported by the city clerk, the applicants spent just short of two million dollars on lobbyists in 2024, twice as much as the second spender resorts world. I call on all the speakers to disclose if they have a financial or business relationship with the applicants in their testimony. Me and many of my neighbors who have long been testifying against the project, do not. Transforming the, quote, "fifty acres of asphalt" is an even better opportunity for climate resilience and community flood protection, instead of a mega casino hotel built in a floodplain with zero clarity on flood protection. Compare the economic activity facts. Though the proposal is to commercialize and build on parkland, which should hugely increase the assessed value of the land, the applicant's average market analysis assumes paying only a point-three percent increase in the payment in lieu of taxes. I call it a park or a parking lot. Me, to me personally, public open space is so much more valuable, but if forced to give it up, I wouldn't do it for point-three percent. To my neighbors who like the proposed jobs, did you notice that in the paperwork, the permanent jobs are covered by a neutrality agreement, not a union security agreement? There is currently no guarantee that future jobs can be union. And while the Met, while Metropolitan Casino has committed to meeting the state's MWBE utilization goals, they have ignored the state precedent to replace parkland acre for acre. Please reject this proposal and preserve our public land.
Good morning. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning, and to be clear, I'm losing money here to be speaking this morning. My name is Michael Hurwitz, I'm a resident of Jackson Heights, a father of two teenagers, and someone who spent the last twenty-five years turning dilapidated open space throughout New York City into thriving centers of community activity. And it's for these reasons that I'm here this morning to speak in favor of Metropolitan Park. For me, this project is one of transportation and green infrastructure, as well as green resilience, as climate resilience, excuse me. The project builds state-of-the-art, accessible subway station, safe walkways, protected bike lanes, and further connects Queens to its waterfront. It builds vital green space and parkland in a borough that disproportionately lacks open space. And that green space is the frontline of climate resiliency, providing a crucial barrier to flooding threats, which we all know are happening more frequently and are more devastating with each occurrence. And while it's that infrastructure that motivates my support, the way that the project organizers have thought about incentivizing hotel guests to discover the diversity of Queens neighborhoods, to support mom-and-pop restaurants and shops and cultural sites, shows a thoughtful intentionalism about how to leverage resources in a real and meaningful way. And when I think about the alternative, which is cement, flooding, inferior public transportation, and an elevated heat index, and let's be clear here today, I've never heard an alternative viable plan presented to develop this space, so to simply say no does not seem responsible or viable. And lastly, there's gonna be twenty-five hundred units of a hundred percent affordable housing built across the street from this project. Failure to develop that cement condemns nearly ten thousand of our neighbors to the aforementioned future of second-class infrastructure and further ice--
Good morning to all elected officials, presidents, supporters, and all over here today. This is the Marquesia at work. My name is Jose Tejada, I'm the second director of the Dominican Mass Society of Queens, a not-for-profit, community-based serving resident in Corona, Jackson Heights, and the surrounding neighborhood, resident for the past thirty-three years. I've been a Corona, Jackson Heights resident for the past forty years. All those that know me know that I would not be here if this was a BS project and not a positive benefit for a community residence. I am currently hungry, thirsty, and tired, but will not miss the opportunity to be here today to, to continue support for the Metropolitan Park Project. It is most important to represent those with our voice that are very supportive of the Metropolitan Park Project. I have been total support since the very beginning, and will not be repeating all the wonderful positive contribution to the future of Queens County. We have seen an increase in community residents enrolling in our ESL technology job preparedness so they can be prepared to work at the Metropolitan Park. Thanks to Steve Cohen, Alice Cohen, Sally, Yulisa Harrock for sharing the love. For those blinded by the light, please give love a chance, and you will also be able to get to Metropolitan Park and see the spring flower bloom. And, and yet, no, this was not created by AI. This is from the heart. Thank you very much. All the way to the end.
He said this was not created by AI.
We're calling numbers thirty-six to forty-six at the mic. Thirty-six to forty-six lineup at the mic, please.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Mo. I lived in Queens for more than thirty years, and I am-- in support of this project, very much so. The reason being is because I'm a community advocate for the past twenty years, as well as now serving as a community board member. And so I've seen many things that previous speakers have talked about in Queens, how, how Queens needs to be developed and also flourish for all the neighborhoods in and around the Citi Field--
The time hasn't started.
Oh, it hasn't?
Just hold on a minute.
Good, I got overtime.
You did, but hold on a minute. And while they're fixing that, I just want to say, whoever's online, if you spoke again, you cannot speak, if you spoke last time, you can't speak again. So, yeah, you can, sorry, Danny.
Lucky me.
Okay.
All right. So, yeah, so I can continue. And as a community advocate, I've seen many things as well. And all the neighborhoods and communities, as Queens is the world's borough, we have one of the most diverse neighborhoods in the world, or maybe the most, right? So many of our ethnic nationalities in the community in Queens, we need more, obviously. In terms of healthcare, if you look at, going back to COVID, many of us in the neighborhood were suffering. And until today, nothing has done in order to improve that. And so this is something that we also talked about with, you know, Sally, you know, Metropolitan Park, where they are committed to provide support in the future for healthcare. So which is one of the big deals that we are going to be having. And on top of it, you know, over one billion dollar committed, the word is committed, right? So, and also forty, four hundred and fifty units of new affordable, all affordable housing, which is very important. And a hundred and forty thousand dollar projected average annual earnings? Come on, guys. And a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty million dollar anticipated local spending each year? This is new. Two hundred, twenty-five million dollar for a first-of-its-kind MWBE. I mean, we are going to have some challenges, maybe, hopefully not. However, as a community advocate, I say, give them a chance. Let's work it out. Because the fact that they also care for the community, they have many times faced community members and spoke about it, discussed about it, and this is where we--
Time.
All right. Good morning. My name is Fernando Ruiz, I'm a retired New York City fireman and owner of Takeria Nixtimal. People often ask me when Nixtimal is coming back to Queens. Mr. Mo, I can attest to that. And the reason I'm in support of this project is because Metropolitan Park is going to make that happen. Unlike the U.S. Open concessions run by Levy and Aramark and other big companies in the neighborhood that do not support our community, Michael Sullivan, the Cohen Group do support local businesses, and that's why I support this project, because they're here for us. And I wanted you to hear from one of these small businesses that wants to come back to the community, who left because there was no business here to be had. And I want to come back, and with the help of this, this great project, that's what's gonna enable me to come back to this community. I love this community, but I had to leave because my business couldn't survive here. And I went off to Manhattan, and that was a disaster, and I just want to come back to where we all started. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam Chair and member of the community. My name is Mo, and I'm a resident of Amos for over thirty-four years. I'm a retired Army Colonel and own a small business. I'm here today to support this project. The project will provide the opportunity for small businesses. Furthermore, the community can enjoy the outdoor activities. I need my vitamin D. Over thirty years of serving in the military, I was constantly indoors and outdoors, and then my vitamin D was very low. And I need to stay active for my mental and physical resiliency. Please support this project, thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Santa Anna, Deputy Director for Policy and Advocacy at the Asian American Federation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of the one-point-five-million Asian Americans we represent through our seventy community-based organizations. For thirty-six years, AF has worked to bring resources into Asian immigrant communities, including small businesses across Queens. Our team supports immigrant small businesses in Flushing, Murray Hill, Elmhurst, Jackson Heights, and Astoria by addressing language barriers, helping them reach new customers, and navigating legislative changes. Despite their resilience, these businesses continue to face serious challenges. In 2024, owners reported a ten percent decline in revenue even during the Lunar New Year celebrations. Tariffs, economic uncertainty, and even the fear of immigration enforcement are driving customers away and making day-to-day operations more challenging. At the same time, we recognize that our neighborhoods can thrive with meaningful investment, and we've consistently advocated for increased resources to support them. That is why we support the Metropolitan Park Project. First, it will strengthen economic inclusion by creating thousands of good-paying jobs, stimulating the economy, and creating new opportunities for residents and businesses. Second, it will improve the quality of life by adding park space, community event venues, and a live performance space for Queens residents. Local restaurants will have opportunities to showcase their food and attract new customers. Third, it will make the neighborhood safer. Wider roads, improved lighting, better highway access, and a renovated seven-train stop will bring more foot traffic, enhance public safety, and make the area more accessible for families, seniors, and customers. We commend the project team for engaging stakeholders, listening to concerns, and revising plans to improve traffic and access. Metropolitan Park is a responsible investment that balances economic growth and community needs. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carolina Bustamante from the Korean American Family Service Center--
from the Korean American Family Service Center, but also resident of Corona, Queens. Metropolitan Park is a project that gives us hope. In a times when the strange and presence of immigrants are too often ignored, this incredible, this incredible once-in-a-lifetime opportunity remind us that we are seen. It makes us feel proud, but most importantly, it reminds us that we matter. More than four years ago, this team came to us and to many other local leaders to listen, learn, and incorporate the voices of our immigrants, working class, and longtime Queens residents. Metropolitan Park hears us or listens to us in a way our own leaders and community representatives should have but didn't. The result is a plan that reflects not only the physical needs of our borough, but also the cultural, social, and economic aspiration of the people who lives here. This mission goes beyond creating open space. It's about supporting the community as a whole. Metropolitan Park is designed to be a place where families can gather safely, where children's and youth can grow and thrive, and where cultural intergenerational connections can flourish. Metropolitan Park will serve as an economic engine for Queens. From the construction phase to long-term maintenance and programming, the project will generate hundreds of good-paying jobs. It will restrain small businesses, create opportunities for local vendors, and ensure that economic benefits remain rooted in our neighborhoods. Queens is not just a borough where the immigrants are. We are who built this project. So.
Good morning. I'm Kylie Chen, a community leader and member of CB7 of Queens. I have been running business in Queens, Flushing, since 1986. Metropolitan Park is not strange to me. So I'm here to support Metropolitan Park Project. The reason is for 50-acre parkland into bringing the job opportunity and the business. That's the reason. Also, I've attended many meetings. That's the reason to standing here to support this project. Thank you all. Please support this project. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Devon Huang. I'm the President, Executive Director for Chinese American Parents Association. We're founded in 1986, serving immigrant communities in the downtown Flushing area. I believe in this project, and I'm here because I believe in public discourse. I believe in listening to both sides and understanding what the pros and what the cons of this project are. And when I take a look at that, just like you are doing right now, I believe the pros outweigh the cons. I know there are going to be people on both sides of that. And that's America. That's what we do, right? We talk about these things. We discuss. But I believe that this project is going to go forward. I believe that there are going to be casinos in this city. I think we all know that. And this project is going to do all of the things that so many other people have already said. The benefits of this project are tremendous. The other reason I'm supporting this project is because I've met with so many other community leaders, so many of them that are here today and that have spoken before. We've met with Sully and his team on numerous occasions, and we've all been involved in the process, which leads me to believe that we will hopefully continue to be involved in the project. And the team is working together with the community to create a great space for all of us. So that's really the bottom line for me, and that's the reason I support this. Because I believe in the team. I believe the project is going to do great things for our communities. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. So are we going to, is someone going to stand up? You're standing up for everything else? Are you going to stand up and say, "Who just yelled out 'sellout'?" All right, you have to go. Security, please. The young lady in the red sweater, please, has to be removed from downstairs. Thank you. And we will wait. No minutes will go past until you're gone.
No, she's not. No, she's not.
Robert rules of order.
Robert's rules of order. Right now, we're waiting. The more time you take to excuse yourself, we will, the more time runs off, the time we have here for more people to speak. Have a good day. Thank you. Okay. Next up, please.
Good morning. Good morning, distinguished members of the panel. Thank you for the work that you're doing and for the opportunity to allow me to speak on behalf of myself, Elizabeth Crowley, and the organization I represent, the Building Trades Employers Association. I'm the president and CEO. The BTA represents over 1,200 contractors. We're general contractors, construction managers, specialty trade subcontractors, and many MWBE contractors. We're the union contractors that employ over 100,000 tradesmen and women who continue to build and rebuild New York every day. We're here in support of Metropolitan Park. We believe that it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that extends beyond the 17,000 construction jobs it will create and the 7,000 permanent jobs. What's so important about this project is the opportunities that it gives our MWBE and growing community contractors, and that it prioritizes Queens residents first, knowing that the economic development is going to happen here to our residents and our small businesses first. As a lifelong member of Queens residents who was born and raised here, and as somebody who represents the BTA, again, we believe that this is an unprecedented opportunity. And we encourage you to make sure that you pass and support Metropolitan Park and that you see this as not only an economic opportunity, but as an investment in the future of Queens. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Gillen. I'm the Director of Technology and Communications at the Queens Economic Development Corporation. I come to reiterate our support for Metropolitan's Park innovative and comprehensive proposal. Metropolitan Park promises to be an anchor institution in the Queens economy, providing thousands of high-quality union jobs for our neighbors across the borough, opportunity for local small businesses, and positive economic effects that will reach far beyond the boundaries of the site plan. The Mets and the rest of the Metropolitan Park team have been trusted community partner and longtime supporter of the work that we do at the Queens Economic Development Corporation. Thanks in part to their support, each year, we help more than 3,000 of our neighbors realize their entrepreneurial dreams through more than a dozen life-changing programs. In addition to the jobs and small business opportunity, this plan will also correct a number of historic challenges that have long hurt our borough. It will transform the sea of asphalt surrounding our flagship sports venue into a vibrant mixed-use community. It will add much-needed green space. It will connect this site to adjacent neighborhoods, and it will restore access to the waterfront. Beyond even the dollars and cents, the project will make Queens a better place. This plan is future-focused and community-first. I thank the board for their time and ask the board to approve this proposal. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, I think we're good. So, good morning, Buenos dias. Chairwoman Hooks, Councilmember Moya, and all these distinguished members of the Metropolitan Park Community Advisory Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm Pinch Hidding. My name is Jose Calderon. I'm the former president of the Hispanic Federation, a nonprofit organization dedicated to building power in Latino communities, greater access, and greater opportunities. My testimony here today is informed by the insights of over 100 New York City-based community organizations, all committed to improving the lives of New York City residents. I was raised and lived in this amazing borough for more than 30 years, what I consider to be the most adverse and most awesome place in the world. I am here to express my strong support for Metropolitan Park. As my colleague mentioned a few minutes ago, public discourse is important. It is critical. I want to acknowledge that on both sides of the aisle, this exchange is critically important and needs to be heard. But we've had a very long and very thoughtful exchange with this committee and the leadership at Metropolitan Park and our community groups to make sure that community concerns are very much heard. And I am confident that it has been taken into serious consideration and will continue to be so in the future. For that reason, I think after more than a year-long engagement and exchange, I am confident that Metropolitan Park will deliver on its commitment and benefit our community. And I do want to point out this important point as my time runs out. The establishment of Metropolitan Park Community Investment Fund, and that is critically important. It will ensure that tens of millions of dollars will be dedicated to serve the residents of Queens, to serve our communities, provide upward mobility, and address community needs as they arise. That's a critically important point. And I thank the leadership in the committee for making sure that's top of mind going forward. Thank you.
We're calling numbers 47 to 52 at the mic. 47 to 52.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the Metropolitan Park Community Advisory Committee for this opportunity to testify. Good to see you, Madam Chair. My name is Dirk McCall de Paloma, and I'm a 33-year resident of Queens and the Executive Director of the Sunnyside Shines Business Improvement District. I'm here today to strongly urge the approval of this project, which will be transformative for our borough. It creates over 23,000 union jobs, 6,000 permanent union jobs, and it's a huge boon for the entire borough and for New York City. It's an over $8 billion investment in our communities. This project is great for small business. It's strongly supported by our merchants and our property owners. They want to see the park improvements. They want to see transit upgrades. They want to see the food hall. They want to see the concert facility. They welcome these community benefits. More visitors to Metropolitan Park along the 7 train is going to bring increased economic vibrancy to Sunnyside. People don't go all the way straight there. They get off, they eat, and then they continue to the project. Metropolitan Park, Queens Future has been very active in Sunnyside, supporting our organizing work with local restaurants and our food event, The Taste of Sunnyside. We thank them for their partnership, and we thank them for their investment in Queens. I urge the Community Advisory Committee to approve this transformative proposal. Thank you.
My name is Sandy, and I'm a Chinese immigrant living in Jackson Heights. Today, I'm not going to talk about how a casino would devastate immigrant communities and displace 50,000 renters. Because research on the impacts of casinos is well-established, and people don't need to be an expert to understand that casinos destroys families and prey on the most vulnerable. I'm here to talk about what I've seen in this process of a billionaire taking away our public parkland and who's helped him to clear the way. Steve Cohen has spent $2.6 million, that we know of, to lobby this casino in 2024 alone. He also hired 13 lobbying firms to do his dirty work. If the communities really want this casino, why all this effort and money? I also don't understand how Moya and Hooks can be on this committee when they're opening for this casino. Cohen even held a fundraiser for Hooks in March 2024. It was clear whose voices are favored here. Why is today's hearing only two hours where other casino hearings are four hours? Why is the developers allowed to hand out the numbers to speak? Last week, the security went against the meeting notice and tried to prevent signs from entering. The only people whose mic got ripped off at the two-minute mark were against this casino. But pro-casino people had plenty of respect to finish their speech. The developers presented for 31 minutes while a Flushing high school student wasn't allowed to speak at all. It is a shame that even our youth have to come here after school to tell you how casinos destroys families. It is moral failing of the adults and electives sitting here. If you want real community input, ask people who can't take time off to be here. Not the people who are on Steve Cohen's payroll in box seats with him at Citi Field, not the nonprofits who got money from him, and community members who have a higher me on their website. We need good jobs. We need investments in our neighborhoods. We need green spaces. But we can't give our public parkland to a billionaire's empty promise that is not enforceable by law. Again, not enforceable by law. And all Queens will have left is two casinos that are three miles away from each other.
Good afternoon. My name is Adam Ray Cecil. I've been a resident of Queens for years, and I'm also a unionized worker. I am opposed to this plan. I am from Baltimore, Maryland originally, and I was seven when the Maryland Live Casino was built, also on a parking lot, by the way. It ruins my community. It ruins my family personally. I know other speakers have already spoken to the effects of casinos. I'm really disappointed to hear the discourse today about how there's nothing else we can do but build this casino, or there are so many other good things that come along with this casino. I think it's dismissive of the damage that will be done by the casino, regardless of whether or not there are doctors and concerts around it. I know from a whole life of experience what a flashy casino project does to community. And I can tell you firsthand that I don't buy into the hype of people in expensive suits when I know that their end game is profit above all else, including your community, including our community, including my community, everybody's community. Thank you.
Is number 50 out there? No? Okay.
My name's Pat Barrett. I'm a resident of Jackson Heights. And I've been a Mets fan all my life, through highs and lows. I have seen how Steve Cohen has improved the Mets, the fan experience. And yet, I strongly oppose his proposal to build a casino next to the stadium. I, this is something that preys on addicts. It's going to add twice the parking we already have, which is going to add twice the congestion in the neighborhood, which is not an environmental benefit. We do absolutely need parkland connecting Flushing Bay to Corona Park. We deserve that. And we're told we can only get it if we can give this billionaire a profit-making engine. We're living now through a second Gilded Age. During the first one, billionaires were shamed into creating things like libraries, national parks. These things did not turn a profit. Now, the billionaires are in such a powerful position. They have de-unionized so much of the country, squashed working people's power and rights to such a degree where people are just begging for any scraps. And they, and they, you know, they insist, this billionaire, a billionaire is 1,000 millions. He says he needs to make more money in order to benefit our community. I think we're at a very sad time in this country, and I just want to know how much more money does Steve Cohen need? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Amy Rosado, and I'm a homeowner in East Elmhurst. Please vote no on this proposal. New York State choosing to move forward with the casino bid process when our immigrant communities are living in fear and when we are in the middle of an affordability crisis is unconscionable. To the politicians in this room, you spend your political capital and energy this year taking meetings with Queens Future lobbyists and giving away our public parkland to a billionaire instead of working for the people. This is a waste of our taxpayer money, and it is causing real harm to our neighbors. Choosing this casino is choosing continued disinvestment in our community, our youth, our future. It will deepen inequality, not solve it. As a parent of young children, I understand the issues families face with childcare. But let's stop pretending that a single employer-sponsored childcare center represents meaningful progress. One facility does not equal systemic change. Many neighbors still don't know this project is a possibility, and if they find out and have a question for the Metropolitan Park team, there's no one to ask, as their website does not have a "Contact Us" section. It only has a deceptive "Add Your Support" tool. The process is flawed. Please vote no. I urge you to reject this proposal.
Calling numbers 53 to 56 at the mic, please. 53 to 56.
Hi, I'm Rachel, and I am a Queens mom, a fourth-generation New Yorker, and I work in public health. I am pissed off that many of my supposed representatives are giving away our public land to a billionaire for a casino. My own children are still young, but once this casino is built, they'll be taking the seven train without me. I cannot accept the idea of them commuting alongside people who may have just lost everything gambling, people who might be desperate or volatile. The so-called community survey I received over the phone about Metropolitan Park was a sham. It never once mentioned the casino. When I asked if it was really about the casino, the caller said they didn't know, and then still asked if I supported it. That is not community support. That is manipulation. Casinos have a long track record of public health harms linked to them, and not just addiction. Every single one of you supporting this casino are also supporting bankruptcy, housing loss, domestic violence, children going to bed hungry, and losing their parents to suicide. Can't even talk. Proponents say the casino is going to bring jobs, and I support union jobs. But look at New Jersey. Research there, when they just started doing this, shows that once you account for lost local spending and the social costs of gambling, the community comes out behind. New Jersey saw $180 million less in economic activity and $350 million a year in added social costs after gambling expansion. This is half a billion dollars that our community will lose every single year. I have an idea. How about we take those 23,000 mostly low-wage jobs and just give each person looking for a job a free $20,000 a year? But speaking of giving away undeserved money, nearly every casino supporter I know has been bought out or promised something that will never come true. We know the how...
Hi. Okay. My name is Jessica Pressler. I'm a resident of Jackson Heights. I'm also a journalist. I covered Wall Street in 2013 when Stephen Cohen's firm was indicted for insider trading, and he almost went to jail and was forced to rebrand. It absolutely sickens me that he is trying to rebrand himself as a job creator who is interested in the well-being and development of Queens. Do not be fooled. Like all of the businesses this man has spent his life building, this is a gambling operation, the goal of which is to squeeze as much money out of the people on the other side of the trade on Wall Street, they refer to as counterparties. I wish all of the things that you guys were saying were true. I wish that we had more park and more green space. I wish Nick Semal was coming back, wherever that guy went. But studies have proven time and time again that casinos do not fulfill these promises. They do not improve communities. They do not improve safety. They certainly do not encourage mental health or discourage addiction. They do the opposite. And everyone here who thinks that they're on Steve Cohen's team, that he's going to lift them up and make everything better for everybody, is wrong. We are the counterparties in this trade. We are the ones who will suffer. Thank you.
Buenos dias. Good morning. My name is Raoul Garcia. I'm a resident of Forest Hills. I first moved to Queens in 1995 to go to law school. I have raised my daughter here in Queens. I have been a member of the community board, Board Three in Jackson Heights. I'm here to support the Metropolitan Park Project. I have attended a number of meetings in which the project...
Hold on. There's something happening in the back? Is it because someone spoke before, previous? Okay, so we allowed that earlier. So it's the same process. So we're gonna now finish his comment. I'm sorry for the interruption. Mr... I'm sorry, use that mic. Please continue. Please continue.
All right. I have attended numerous meetings. The project have promised...